All right, six o'clock, we'll call the school board meeting for Yalbissnese for Monday, December 8th to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do a roll call of board members, we'll start with Director Winter.
Winter.
Amanda Lacy.
Laurel Christensen.
Jeremy LeBlanc.
Matt Semple.
Abby Richter.
And then next is the reading of the Wyoming Mission Statement, and Director Christensen will read that.
Our mission is to provide a caring environment of high expectations that prepares every student for a successful future and instills the value of learning.
Thank you. And next is public address to the Board of Education, anybody who'd like to address the board. Seeing none, move to the truth and taxation hearing. Jeremy Wilcox, our Wyoming Finance Director. Jeremy?
Approve the agenda.
Oh, we need to approve, I'm sorry, let's back up, we'll approve the agenda. Approve the agenda, is there any motions or corrections to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as it is.
Motion, or second?
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, no, carries. All right, now, truth and taxation hearing.
Good evening, so we are presenting our annual truth and taxation tonight. The agenda will be reviewing the meeting requirements, presenting our next year's fiscal year budget, the presentation of the proposed tax levy, and then open for public comment. Truth and taxation requirements, we must hold a meeting between December 25th and December 30th at 6:00 PM or later. This can be a part of our regular scheduled meeting, and we need to present the fiscal year '26 budget along with the paid '26 proposed tax levy and allow for comment. A little background on Minnesota school funding, public school districts are funded by the federal government, state government, local fees, local taxpayers through property tax, and Minnesota funding, the state of Minnesota is our largest source of funding. Page five is just a little graph of where funding is in comparison to inflation. School funding is lagging by $1,453 currently. And then as we move on into our budget for fiscal year '26, school districts are required to use a fund accounting system, and so we account for that by our general fund, food service, community service, we've added the building construction fund this year, here for next fiscal year, debt service, and then we've got some smaller internal funding sources or balances. Our fiscal year '26 budget summary, in total for revenues, we've projected a revenue of $13,178,145, and expenses of $12,928,130, currently a surplus of $250,000. Page nine, this is just an overview of our revenues by source code. Seventy-six percent is our state aid, property taxes make up about eighteen percent, federal aid is about two percent, and then the remaining is miscellaneous income, miscellaneous sources of about four percent. When we look at expenditures and the makeup by program, our largest is elementary and secondary programming, which is thirty-seven percent, special education is about twenty-three percent of our budget, and people's support services is about eleven percent, and then some smaller ones there that make up the rest. Page eleven, just some highlights of the district. We recently went through a bond rating with Moody, came out very favorable for our district, we were rated at an A1, and then with the credit enhancement program through the state of Minnesota, it was a double A1, which then ultimately helped in the rate that we got for funding of the bond. Highlighting the financial reporting report, that's just as a district having the audit submitted on time to MDE, and then we had a very favorable audit opinion again this year, we had a non-qualified opinion, so Kyle will talk more about that tonight. Our 2026 property tax levy, just a timeline on page thirteen, this summer I provide information to MDE to calculate our preliminary levy amounts, in September, you as a board certify that preliminary amount, and then in November, elections are held that could affect the amounts of levies, and then we hold our truth and taxation between November 25th and December 30th, and then in 2026, property taxes are collected by the counties and distributed to the school district. Next page, the state limits, state limits the local property tax levy by statutory defined formulas. The levy limitation formulas are driven by people counts, specific eligible expenditure types, population, voter authorization, and district-wide property valuations. Page fifteen is an overview of our levy by fund, so proposed paid '26 for general fund is $1,977,840, and that was just an increase of a point three percent. Our fund four, community service, proposed for 2026 is $135,236, and that's a decrease of ten percent. The decrease, we've got that pool over in Clarkfield that we're levying a little less this year, so that was a large amount of that decrease, and then ECFE, we're losing a little bit of funding. And then we've got our fund seven, debt service, $5,192,655, biggest increase there is the referendum, the success of that. So we're looking at a proposed paid '26 of $7,305,736. Next page, some of the major changes, the operating referendum increased a little over forty-seven thousand, and that's due to some inflationary adjustments and reduction of state aid, and then there was sixty-five thousand in multiple adjustments, and those are for LTFM, local optional, and other general levy amounts. And then we've got the debt service increase of $4,439,000, and again, that was due to the bond referendum. And just to note too, that of that amount of the bond referendum, about fifty-four percent of that is going to be covered through that AIG to school credit. Next page, the percent change in tax levy does not necessarily equal the change to our budget revenue. Some levy increases are offset by a reduction in state aid, meaning no additional revenue for school district budgets. Page eighteen, timeline for the taxpayers, in March, they'll receive their preliminary valuation notice from the county, in spring and early summer, the local county board of appeal and equalization meetings are held to provide taxpayers an opportunity to challenge, and then November, counties deliver mailed notices of proposed property taxes to each taxpayer. November to December timeframe, we hold our truth and taxation meeting, and then in March of 2026, taxpayers will receive the statement from the county for taxes payable. Page nineteen is just an example of the proposed tax statement, and then the next page is just a sample of the valuation notice, which will show you the appeal process along with the dates and time that will be held. Page twenty-one, there's three key variables to calculating property tax, the first is estimating market value, which is established for each parcel by the assessor, property classification, rates established by the state and legislature, and then the tax levy is established by taxing jurisdictions such as a school, city, county, and others. Page twenty-two, property values do not rise uniformly across all properties, the burden of the levy shifts from taxpayers with lower increases to those with higher increases, so a higher increase will mean a larger piece of that property tax. Twenty-three, there's two types of tax valuations, you've got your net tax capacity, which is most all property types pay on that, and then you've got the referendum market value, which excludes the AIG land and seasonal rec properties. And twenty-four is just a breakout of how our levy is, and so net tax capacity levy amount is $5,973,740, and the referendum market value levy amount is $1,331,996. Page twenty-five, you guys have probably seen this, this is the 2026 tax for residential, so this is based on an average house of $150,000, and what that breakout is for the school tax piece of it. And the taxes are lining up to what were anticipated through the whole process of the Page twenty-six is the referendum market value increase of five point three five percent, and then again, how that flows through and affects those types of properties. Twenty-seven, page twenty-seven, that's if there was no increase in the value of the property, what those payments would look like, and twenty-eight, if there was an eleven percent, what that would look like with the residential. Page twenty-nine are some additional resources for taxpayers, there's the Minnesota homestead property tax refund, special property tax refund program, senior citizen property tax deferral, disability veterans' homestead property tax exclusion, blind or disabled special homestead credit or classification, and a green acres and rural preservation. So tonight I'm recommending that we certify the levy in the amount of $7,305,736. Page thirty-one is just some contact information for myself, if there's any questions or counties.
Any questions for Jeremy, any public comments? It's good. You sit down and report. Thank you. Is there a motion to certify the levy on here to narrate? Appreciate it. I'll stay up here with Kyle. Okay, yes, all right. Next is the fiscal year '25 audit report, Kyle Kruger, Hoffman Bros. Welcome.
Thank you. I'll try to keep it short, I'm sure everyone loves getting to hear from two accountants in a row back to back, but there's really not a lot to go over, it was a pretty uneventful year audit-wise, I mean, there's a lot going on at the district, but a lot of that has taken place after 6:30, 25, which is the date of our report here, or the balance sheet date, so I'll start by pointing out, if you flip a few pages into your independent auditors' report here, this is where you'll see the opinion. As Jeremy mentioned, it is a clean opinion, there's basically three levels of opinion, there's a unmodified or clean opinion, which you guys have here, there's also qualified and adverse, which are, you know, indicative of an issue of some sort that we found, very few levels of that, but glad to say that you have a clean opinion, which means that your financials are fairly stated and can be reliably used by, you know, members of the district, the school board, and maybe most importantly here, bonding companies. So, just something I want to point out, kind of towards the bottom of the page, there's a change in accounting principal note. This year, we assisted in the implementation of GASB 101, which relates to compensated absences, that's a, you know, another GASB pronouncement similar to pensions and OPEB and things that I've talked about in the past here that get added to your statement in that position, but don't necessarily mean a whole lot in terms of a true liability to the district the way you guys may think of it, you know, something coming due within the next twelve months or something of that nature. Basically, what we did was analyze the vacation and sick leave and personal leave balances that the district has outstanding with its employees, and, you know, based on management's estimates, came up with a dollar amount to record representing those liabilities at, you know, people's vacation, sick leave hours at their current pay rates as of the end of the year. So just want to point out the impact that has on the financials. If you were to flip to page ten, I always kind of like to issue this disclaimer, and I can give you some background with the comp apps at the same time, but these financial statements, the statement in that position, and the next page, the statement of activities, are on a full accrual basis. I think Jeremy mentioned in his presentation too, that school districts are required to and routinely report on a fund level basis, which is modified accrual, so that excludes a lot of long-term items. And in particular, when looking at these statements, you'll see in your non-current liabilities, about two-thirds of the way down the page, there's a net pension liability, a total OPEB liability, and then of course, your non-current portion of long-term liabilities above that is your current portion of long-term liabilities. That is representative of your outstanding bonds at year-end, which were barely minimal, you had paid off two of the three bonds that were left outstanding, of course, this is prior to any issuances in fiscal year '26. But those are large dollar amounts, net pension liability in particular, you guys contribute to TRA and PARA via payroll deductions and employer contributions, seeing a liability for that there is not going to change how you contribute to PARA, none of that is going to come due in additional invoice or bill from one of those pension plans at any point, that is just a accounting standard that says you are required to record your proportionate share of TRA or PARA's liabilities in that case, so. So I'd just like to point that out, because if you go down near the bottom into your net position, there's your unrestricted net position, that's any funds that aren't set aside by a state or federal level restriction for spending, or something already earmarked for debt service, et cetera. About negative three million dollars, it could be alarming if that's not explained properly. A better representation of how much, I guess, unrestricted in quotes or unassigned dollars you have, if you were to flip to page twelve, you can see kind of the stark difference there, if you look near the bottom of the page at the unassigned fund balance in total for all the funds of about 3.3 million. So, pretty significant swing, about five and a half million dollar difference between the two, and a lot of that is driven by those liabilities that are required to be reported on your financials, but are not necessarily something the district is going to have to budget for in terms of expenditures in the near future. So I recommend using page twelve, fourteen, you know, in terms of your guys' review and planning, however you may use these statements, that'll give you a much clearer picture of school district operations for the year. I also want to point out, on page fifty-one, is the beginning of your budget to actual schedules for each governmental fund, so that's your general fund, food service fund, community service fund, and then also your debt service funds. I'm not going to, you know, drag you through those line by line, but those give you an incredible amount of detail on your funding sources, what you budgeted in that regard, expenditures in your budget, and a comparison to last year, so, you know, whether you use these for any sort of analysis, I'm not sure, but these, in my opinion, are kind of the most informational and relevant as management or governance in terms of your review. So flipping back up to the front of the report, starting on page one, I just want to run through a few of the financial highlights for the year, we list those out in the management's discussion and analysis. First bullet point there refers to net position. Again, that's kind of what I just explained, I don't like to delve too deeply into that because those numbers become not necessarily useless, but difficult to understand and don't really paint a clear picture of district operations, so. But in any event, those numbers decreased overall by about ninety-five hundred dollars from the prior year, a lot of that is due to favorable differences in pension plan investments in TRA and PARA. Basically, what they do is they estimate their investment returns year over year and run those through their actuarial data, and inevitably, the actual results end up being different, resulting in either a benefit or a, you know, an expense that ends up running through the district's financial statements. The general fund fund balance increased about thirty-four thousand, total unassigned fund balance, again, as I pointed out, is about 3.3 million, and the total unassigned fund balance currently is almost thirty percent of your budgeted expenditures during fiscal year 2025. The district has set a goal of maintaining twelve percent of the annual budget in unassigned, so you can see you're well in excess of your goal, which is good. The ESER program, the elementary, secondary school emergency relief funds that came about as a result of the COVID pandemic, have finally concluded in fiscal year '25. Obviously, that was an inflow of resources that benefited the district for a time, also caused you to have a single audit at least one year, so not everything that resulted from that was positive for the district, but this year, we were back down to a level of federal funding that was under the federal threshold of $750,000 in terms of expenditures. So with that money kind of coming to a conclusion, those programs, your federal dollars you're bringing in in spending have decreased substantially, and we expect them to kind of normalize now going forward now that all that money's worked its way through the system, until they come up with another plan to give you guys some more money. But, good that you'll no longer need the single audit, of course, that comes out some extra expense to the district and some more work for Jeremy, Rich, and everyone involved there, so. The next couple of bullet points relate to capital activity, which was pretty minimal in fiscal year '25, had some routine equipment purchases, a tractor, utility vehicle, wrestling mask, replace some doors and install the wireless access point, overall, the amounts capitalized were just over a hundred and seventy thousand. And then, as I mentioned, made the final payments on the general obligation capital facilities bond, series 2010B, and the OPEB, series 2028 bonds. So as of 6:30, 25, there was one bond left outstanding, off the top of my head, I want to say it was around seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars left to pay on that, so, again, a lot of things happening here since 6:30, 25, in terms of debt issuance projects, all that sort of stuff. And then I discuss GASB statement 101. The overall impact to the district wasn't terrible in terms of additional liabilities, a little over a million dollars was our, in quotes, prior period adjustment, we go back and analyze what would the prior year have looked like if it were implemented at that time, and it would have increased your liabilities by that amount you see there, and there was pretty minimal change during fiscal year '25, so the total amount of those liabilities booked is, you know, in the neighborhood of a million, slightly over. I'll just point out a few things in the MDNA, page two is going to primarily explain your financial statements, so I kind of gave you a rundown of that, but this is more detailed, tells you the difference between your full accrual or government-wide, there's a lot of terminology that gets applied to those statements, and your fund level modified accrual Page three is just a summary of that statement in that position that we took a look at already, so I won't spend any time there. Page four is a summary of your statement activities, which is basically the corresponding income statement to that, full accrual statement in that position. Again, don't like to spend a lot of time here, a lot of those expenses are slightly skewed, I guess, in the way you all are maybe used to looking at them, but it's going to include your pension expense, your OPEB expense, expense related to compensated absences, not necessarily cash or accrued outflows coming out of the district's funds in fiscal year '25. On page five, near the bottom, you'll see a small table that shows a summary of your revenue and expenditures in your governmental funds. So you can see overall, a fund balance increase across your governmental funds of over twenty thousand dollars, so a positive operating year, general fund had a pretty substantial increase, and food service fund had a relatively substantial decrease. That just occurs as a result of your, you know, food service sales, state aids, and things like that relative to the cost of offering the programs, so not necessarily a bad thing. On page six is your summaries of your revenue and expenses for the year, so you can see fairly stable, the largest kind of fluctuations in your revenues in the top half of the page there relate to your state and federal sources, so we discussed why your federal sources went down, those COVID-19-related programs came to an end, and then things like special ed, general education aid, you guys saw some increases there. And then I'll also point out and explain a bit the other financing sources, so you'll see there issuance of right-of-use lease, issuance of subscription arrangements, this is another one of those full accrual items you'll see in your liabilities on your statement in that position. When you enter into a multi-year lease or subscription arrangement, there was standards issued a few years back covering both of those that required those to be capitalized onto the balance sheet. So again, those are reflected on those full accrual numbers. In the funds, like you're seeing here in the general fund, those are required to be reported as a other financing source and an expense, so they effectively net to zero in your funds, whichever fund they may be issued out of. So they effectively net to zero in your funds, whichever fund they may be issued out of. They have no impact on your fund balance or anything like that, it's just kind of a, a presentation quirk, I guess you could say. And then your expenditures, about two-thirds of the way down the page, nothing surprising there, in my opinion. Salaries and wages went up three-point-two percent, I would guess. That's kind of in the ballpark of your kind of routine annual raises. Employee benefits up fairly substantially, and everyone, you know, anywhere you work at this, at this time are aware of the difficulties with health insurance and the increasing costs and all that that goes there. Capital expenditures were down, we touched on some of the specific things, and obviously, big project in works currently. Page seven, I, I won't read them all to you, I'll spare you that, but goes into some of the reasons for fluctuations across the general fund, food service fund, community service fund, et cetera, individually. Again, nothing surprising. Page eight will give you some detail on your fixed assets and your debt. You can see, you know, most notably at the bottom or near the bottom of the page is the amount of outstanding bonds that are still out there, seven-hundred-and-sixty thousand, down from one-point-seven at the end of last year. So, some of the lowest outstanding debt I've seen in a school district in my career had, you know, kind of a snapshot there, so that's, that's solid financial management. As we all know, there's a lot of, you know, maybe you could call it necessary debt coming with the big school project here down the road, so. So pretty good timing for a new bond issuance, shedding a lot of that old debt first. So I just wanted to point that out. And then page nine, there's a fairly lengthy note in there, I won't go through it all, but kind of the second paragraph is a fairly long description of the upcoming project and bond issuance, and a couple of contracts that were entered into related to that after year-end. And then, an encouraging chart, your average daily memberships, so that's basically your student counts from fiscal year twenty-four through fiscal year twenty-eight using MDE's projections that they currently have available, and your enrollment is trending slightly upward, which is good. You know, being from this area my whole life, working with a lot of districts in this area, it, it seems to be a constant battle keeping enrollment up, so it's good to see that being relatively stable, even creeping upward. So I, I don't think I want to torture you anymore by dragging you through any more of this report. I, I pointed out the budget-to-actual schedules, and those will be, you know, very useful for you guys, in my opinion. A lot of the notes you'll see here behind the statements relate to your accounting policies that are largely unchanged, a lot of actuarial language related to those things I discussed, the pensions, the OPEB, so I won't drag you through those. Near the end, there are findings, which were very minimal this year. Whenever we assist with recording a balance, such as the pensions and OPEB and things of that nature, auditing and accounting standards require us to report that, so we maintain our independence and don't appear compromised in any way or, or anything of that nature, so, so nothing alarming in the way of findings. Yeah, in conclusion, I just want to, want to thank Jeremy, Rich, Tara, Denise, everyone who else. I know, especially this year with the referendum, the accounting system transition, all the project meetings and all that, it's, it's a lot of work to get these done, and everyone did a great job and was a, a great help along the way, getting us info when you needed it and everything like that, so, so I appreciate that. Any questions or concerns?
Any questions for Kyle?
Are the, is the draft digital copy the same as this copy? I'm just missing pages thirteen and fourteen of the basic financial statements.
Oh, are you? Okay, we can get a new one sent over, let me see if I have it here. Yeah, I have one more, we can have this one. But yeah, Jeremy should also have a PDF of the report that he can provide if anyone needs it.
I have the basic financial statements.
I have them.
The draft is there, I was just asking.
Oh yeah, it's the same. I have the original now from Kyle.
Yep, the final.
Yeah.
Release, whatever, so PDFs can go to anyone at this point. And yeah, you can certainly have my page thirteen and fourteen.
That's fine, I was just missing it, so I didn't know if anyone else was missing it, so.
Sure.
Those are the ones that, you know, the, the ones that make sense, the fun.
Oh, sure, sure, yeah. I just give a big, long speech about how to focus on those and then I'll give them to you, so that's great.
Any other questions for Kyle? Thank you to you and your team for putting together a lot of time, I know those are big tasks to do, but.
Appreciate it, yeah, and thanks for having us. We've been working with you guys and hope to continue and wish you luck with the upcoming project and all the fun that's involved.
Yeah, it should be more fun next year when you get to do that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, you guys will see a lot of changes to these with that, probably a building construction fund that gets opened up, a lot of construction in progress over the years, and just knock on wood that the anticipated completion date stays close to their estimate at this time.
It will. Throw that in the universe.
Yep.
All right, any other questions? We're moving on to the acceptance and approval of the fiscal year twenty-five item.
Motion is there a second?
No, second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Next item is the consent agenda, approval of the meeting minutes for November tenth, approval of the payment for claims, approval of the finance report, approval of enrollment reports, acknowledged leave requests, approved PAC for families collaborative membership, and authorized additional financial personnel. Katie Reiger.
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion on the consent? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Carries. Moving on to reports, first one is the Burt Rainey Elementary Report, Principal Hanson.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, on a snowy night.
Yes.
More weather coming?
Yeah.
Make sure not to.
I don't think so. There you go. Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. December holiday activities for staff and students at Burt Rainey are coming around. My apologies, I didn't have it done in time to get it uploaded on Board Book, so you get a paper cut tonight. Also, would like to touch base on our parent-teacher conferences. As you may recall, we updated or did a different format this year, and so I pulled data, and we do collect data from preschool, so keep in mind that we have two all-day, every-day classrooms, a Monday, Wednesday, Friday classroom, and a Tuesday, Thursday. So I pulled data on our fall parent-teacher conferences at Burt Rainey, and parents had an option of in-person, phone, Zoom, or they could request an email conversation with the teacher. And including preschool, of three-hundred-and-sixteen students at that time, two-hundred-and-seventy-five were represented for conferences, and if my spreadsheet math was right, that's a eighty-seven-point-zero-three percentage of participants. Five of our teachers had a hundred percent attendance for that night, so.
Nice.
That's actually up from last year, I, I should have looked for sure, but I would say prior to last year, we typically are, are always in that high eighty, ninety range, so it's good to see. ELA update, which is our reading curriculum, as you may recall, last year was our first year using the new reading curriculum, and one of the things that we did last year, which would have been twenty-four, twenty-five, was we went in knowing we were going to get through as much material as possible, but our, the company also explained to us it's brand-new to everybody, so you will not get through everything. And we also worked really hard last year to not add any additional features to the curriculum. However, this fall, we knew going in that we wanted to start looking at areas that might be repetitive, looking at they provide a pacing guide for each grade level, and also areas that have, that are really strong, or maybe areas that are, are weak. So a couple of weeks ago, Natalie Delmonico, who is the regional literacy lead for Southwest Minnesota, she is out of the service co-op, she actually came to Burt Rainey and met with our ELA committee after school, and she helped us get started with looking through the, our CKLA curriculum, and she is actually returning in January for three full days to help. Each grade level will have two and a half hours with her to really look through things, and, and she's going to help figure out if that's repetitive, you don't need to do this, or that's weak, we need to add. So definitely appreciative of her help, and then our local literacy lead, Mrs. Schneider, will also be in on those meetings with grade levels as well. Any questions on one, two, or three?
So you said the parent-teacher conference attend, participation was similar to prior years?
It was.
The change?
It was, yes.
Any feedback from parents that you?
I did not get any, I did not.
Yep.
I don't know if any of you did, okay? It was interesting because we had quite a few come in at that earlier time, you know, we were never sure, but I think what we found was some of them, you know, that like work a night shift, they actually were able to come in, where in the past they weren't. But I think pros and cons, just like with any warm-up. I also wanted to give you an update on our elementary physical education position. As you know, we recently had a opening there, and I just really want to extend a big thank you to Michelle Bavrika, who is our current long-term sub. She literally jumped in immediately to help us cover that position. Her positive attitude and willingness to collaborate with all of us is very much appreciated. Right now, we are currently advertising for a licensed physical education teacher, as Mrs. Bavrika is not licensed in that area. When we posted it, we noted a start date of early January, or whenever licensure can be secured, and the reason for that is sometimes you'll see a December graduate of college, and by the time they go through the licensing process and Pelsby, I know the last one that we hired in December, it was about middle of January, and so we left that a little bit open on our post, and I checked today, I believe we posted it on November twenty-fourth, and to date, we have zero applications. Last week, Morehead State University staff members, I did visit with them, and they actually shared out our post. They didn't share their student list with me, but they did forward it on, and I could see because they blind copied me, which I certainly appreciate. And then SMSU actually does like an opt-in list of all of their December education graduates, and all of our, our posting information, I, you know, directly to them now. Many of them are like K-12 art or science. If they have an education degree, they got an email saying that we have this position open. We also have had two retired PE teachers work to help support Mrs. Bavrika, and many YME staff members have extended their offers of help, which is also very much appreciated, so. Questions?
Questions from Samantha? Heard some positive feedback on the, the long-term sub for Jim.
Yes, yes.
She's very excited.
She's got lots of energy. Yes, she does. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Stacy's not able to join us today, but she did put on a report, and so I'll kind of stumble through it, you know, she's had a lot of things happening here at middle school, high school, with the play, concerts, our winter sports has started, had a pretty good turnout, heard great things about our veterans program, so thank you to those people that put that together. Our indigenous games, which was both in the elementary and here, happened, Satis White Buffalo, again, something, got a lot of positive press out of, and then the end of the core middle school celebration was held. Coming up next week, the eighteenth, if you're not in a festive mood yet, there's some, some opportunities to join the band and choir in caroling at the Opera Sioux Elder Christmas Party at the Granite Manor, Clarkfield Nursing Home, and the Montevideo Veterans Home. That's on December eighteenth, and I believe there are concert, the, the choir concerts next Monday.
Next Monday, yep.
If my memory serves me right, so. That concludes the middle school, high school report.
Okay. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Okay, so background check service, we're continuing to work on that to try and make sure we can get the needed background checks for our new employees, so we'll meet with them, we met with them several times. Part of this is to make sure we drive it to a price that we, meets our needs to, we don't want to, you know, it's like buying a car, you can spend as much as you want, so, but we need to protect ourselves. So we have another meeting, it was supposed to be today, but it got postponed to Wednesday, so we'll do that. EM, YME negotiations, I shared some information on there, next meeting, I, our last one was Thursday, November thirteenth at six, our next one is this Wednesday at five-thirty with the pre-meeting at five-fifteen. You can see, we'll go through, one of the big things we'll review at this next meeting is what's open proposals. We did make some, maybe not financial progress, significant financial progress, but we did make some progress on things, and I think we'll make some significant progress in our next meeting, so hopefully that goes well for, for us, so. Food service update, gives you an idea there of what we're serving for meals. September breakfast compared to last year was up quite a bit. October, now, I can't guarantee that's the same number of school days there, I didn't break it down that far, I just broke it down by month, and I didn't break it down, more or less did it for me. So October, we were up, November, down a little bit, I really can't, I can't guess why that is, but September lunches kind of followed that same sort of trend, so. But overall, seems like pretty good participation numbers. MRA board vote, I should have talked to Jeremy before this, but the board gets one vote, administrators get one vote, teachers get one vote, so we'll have these, I need to get that in, I'm sorry, didn't write down the date, but if you folks are all right, Jeremy can pick one and give you that vote, and I will send it in with the rest. Looks like it's all on you.
We trust you.
All right, I'll use my best judgment.
Calendar update, so it's getting to that time of year, I was kind of thinking I would wait for our construction people, but I don't know, I, I've got a feeling we'd be in April before we decided on a calendar, so I would take up two, three people that want to volunteer to serve on a calendar committee. It would be a virtual obligation, do our best to kind of try and work around schedules, but understand that they would either start at seven forty-five or three fifteen, and we'll go from there. Is there anyone interested in helping out? You represent both the board and the parents in this situation, so.
I could do it.
I've done it before, so.
Yeah, I have too.
If someone else wants to do it, feel free, otherwise I'll be happy to help out.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else got room for one more? If anybody's terribly bored.
Minnesota Paid Leave, we're slowly, through Denise and Tara's effort, getting people to sign up for that. We had to get people noticed by December 1st. We did the best we could without personally calling everyone and getting them to sign. Part of that thing is we don't want to take verbal authorization if we have to provide proof that somebody wants to test us because, or claim that we did not give them notice. So that's why we're using the online. And unfortunately, it doesn't apply to you folks, or fortunately, however you all look at that. Negotiations update, I guess I went through that, that appeared there twice in my report. Building update, Window Architects will be here on December 17th and 18th. We have Facilities Focus Group on the 17th at 6:00. In the past, that's been Matt, Sonia, and Jeremy, but I believe Jeremy here unavailable that evening.
Correct.
Is there anyone interested in attending for? Okay. All right. So it's at 6 o'clock that night, so. Having an in-person meeting on interior finishes. Now, I kind of put the names down, possibly Abby and Sonia, because both of you went to site. Is it possible, I know unfortunately that's during the day, and it's just not a possibility. So it would be the administrators, some board members.
I'm on town that day, so I can't, but I can talk to Sonia tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be great if you could get back. The other three that I thought we could pick from too is Matt, or the people on the design team, that's Amanda, or Amanda. Are any of you available?
I didn't bring my work, so I'll have to check my work schedule to see if I can make this as 1:30 ready.
That's in-person?
Yeah.
I could do that, yeah.
Okay. So some of the things we're going to talk about, just so you think about it. So Abby and Sonia got to see kind of the polished concrete, what we're looking at, set of terrazzo. Unfortunately, our district didn't win the lottery, so we're not going to have terrazzo in our buildings. So polished concrete's a good alternative. Some of it will be based upon color finishes, both interior and exterior. Will be talked about a little bit, but the focus will be on interior finishes, so. All right? And some of that will be too about the durability, which again, we'll talk about during our, we talked about whether we want sheet rock or block wall. Sheet rock, number one's much cheaper for a variety of reasons, and also sheet rock keeps us on schedule. Getting the bricklayers in can be time-consuming, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't consider it, so. All right? Kitchen layout, I've attached it on there, you can kind of see. Here's a couple highlights that I really like. First of all, the first layout they gave us only had one serving line. So went back to the drawing court, we needed two serving lines. One serving line is what we have right now. It doesn't speed things up. Even with the efficiency of a new kitchen, we really want to shorten up the length of our lunch period. So kiddos eat after 11 o'clock is what we're going for. If you look at it too, you'll see an à la carte option. That will be our goal at some point, is an à la carte option for our kiddos, especially in middle school and high school, to meet the reimbursable meal. So that would have things such as, like we saw there, we saw salads and subs and pizza on there every day, and still make it a reimbursable meal. We're kind of a small district to do that, but that's our goal, is to get to that point. So. Hopped kitchen layout too, the other thing is, right now, if you go down to our freezer, you have to take, there's a little ramp, it's about a six inch, four and a half inch lift to get into the freezer. We designed it so that it's on level, so our cooks don't have to get momentum pushing stuff into the freezer, so. We added a second freezer too, because so many of our commodities now come as well as food. We do have another meeting, which is an opportunity for board members to participate. Again, it's during the day, unfortunately. The meeting's on December 12th, so this Friday from 10 to 11:30. It's called an MAP engineering meeting, so that's mechanical, which includes HVAC, electrical and plumbing. Is there any board members that could attend that?
I can do that.
All right. So that will be online, so I know there's been some talk about where that HVAC is going to be in the 1980 gentleman's, so that'll be part of it. We did choose a bathroom layout, hopefully I got that attached in there correctly. We did not go to the extreme where it was all the stalls in a common area. We still did go to a breakout. You'll notice in that, there's separate rooms for all of the water closets, I guess you would call them, including urinals. The doors right now that we're looking at, which we can still change our mind on, do not run all the way to the top or all the way to the bottom. So they will have separate ventilation, so if we ever choose to reconfigure that with old doors, we can.
And we should note as well that these are for the high school bathrooms.
Yep.
Not elementary.
Very good point, thank you. Yeah, the elementary will have normal elementary. All right? And that's kind of the trend that you're seeing with these schools, so. Precast bid package, so it looks like we're going to have openings for the precast bids. What's the name of the program? Best value, I believe, right? Best value bids, so that will happen on the 6th. That's not something you folks would need to be part of, but what we talked about at Buildings and Grounds is having representatives from the Buildings and Grounds Committee be a part of that grading process. One of the factors will be cost, but there's also best value in there too. Meaning, can they meet the timelines? Can they provide us with the engineering we need to support it? So, questions or comments about that? You folks okay with doing that?
So, the 6th is when the bids need to be hereby?
Correct.
When are they going to be sent out?
They'll be sent out before that, here before the end of this month.
Okay.
They have to be, they have to be out at least 25 days before the end of the day.
Okay. And then if we go with the Buildings and Grounds viewing or grading them, then we have to do that within one week of the 6th.
Correct. Yep.
Just making sure I answered for us.
Yeah.
Questions or?
So you would intend the Buildings and Grounds Committee then to pick the bid package that we build with?
To grade them. The picking won't actually come to the full board.
To the full board, okay.
Yep. So we need some people to grade it, to give it and make a recommendation to the full board.
I just want to make sure we're clear on.
Yeah. And this may be one where, you know, because of some timelines, we have to have a separate board meeting.
Right.
Because that precast is going to drive things. I mean, we're going to have to do some groundwork before that, but the precasts, that's got to be set for us to roll, especially for the high school, that's going to happen this summer. All right? So sorry, so windy. Any questions?
Committee reports. Before New York School Care Task Force was on November 11th.
I'll just kind of touch on that here, all right, that. So we kind of met, one of the things that came out of there is we're having a holiday special for four days over the holiday break, because it's two weeks open. Palo Jumpers is going to be closed at least. Is it for the whole time?
Not the whole time, but close, I think.
Yeah. So we thought it was an opportunity to fill in with a service that people were looking for. Right now, it looks like we have about eight kiddos registered for that. We'd like that, we were expecting a little bit more than that. Doesn't mean that it can't go up yet before that. So, holiday special, joined a few people, but I'm kind of hoping for a few more. The other thing that really, the other big driving thing was, what are we going to do this summer? Well, one of the things that will drive what's offered is can we offer a summer food service program? Because that will bring down the cost of operations significantly, if we can serve food at no cost to our kiddos. So we're working on that, Marles is checking into our options for that, and how to do that. I have no idea how to put a price on it or to staff if we have to provide meals.
Do we have a goal date on when we would have an announcement on summer?
I was kind of hoping I could do it by the time we put out the next community ad flyer, but I don't think I can get it done by then. So I would think by the end of January. She doesn't have to apply for summer food service program until March, so.
Okay.
We'll see what we can get now. And I apologize, it's just, we think it's a niche that can serve our kiddos for four days a week. So, because now Parks and Rec, summer Parks and Rec, it's just four days a week.
Okay. Any questions about New York School Aftercare? All right, next is the Policy Committee, met on November 12th. Sure about that?
I can do it. Let's see. So we kind of went over the differences between the technical and substantial changes, so you'll see a motion later on for us to approve allowing the Policy Committee and Rich and to make those technical changes, where it's just legal reference changes, that kind of stuff, the simple things. And then the other substantive changes will still come to the full board. So you'll see that recommendation from the Policy Committee later is to adopt that process, then you don't have lists of 500 policy things, it'll just be the ones that are substantial changes, not legal references or definition changes. Data request, so there's, I think that's on here later, I forgot, I'll just check on that one. But there's some information, you know, just what we have to do to comply with data requests, public data requests, who we have to provide them for, what the fees will be for those making requests that aren't about themselves, printing fee, et cetera. Let's see. Mandatory training for board members, you should have all got your email to complete some mandatory training. Thank me, or don't thank me, because I asked a question, but there's some training that we should be taking as a board, mandatory reporting, et cetera, that we should be taking along with the staff. Thank you, Mary Claire.
You're welcome.
That's it.
Yeah, is that vector training?
Vector training should be, have been emailed out to you.
Oh, it is? I didn't read that.
Students, okay.
I think so. There is a deadline on there, and you can't?
Denise is going to give you extra.
I didn't realize it, let it play.
Don't get it done.
No. Watch it.
And again, she threw a.
Yeah. I tried. I was like, oh, this is going to be here another time.
Good to know.
All right. And then the rest of the Policy Committee meeting, you'll see in item 13. Down there, it's mostly just those minor changes.
All right. Anything questions for the Policy Committee? Thank you, Matt. Next is the Finance Committee, met on November 19th. Sure about that?
I'll talk to Karen.
I'll let Matt go for it.
We, we talked, we talked before the meeting.
We had a plan going in, so.
I mean, kind of went through the standard finance stuff, enrollment reports, which we see every month in the board report. Kind of walked through kindergarten kickoff, you know, what we anticipate for next year coming in, kind of that, similar to what we've been seeing, it could be around 40, it could be up to 50, in that range, I'm going to look that way, because that's our expert over there on kindergarten kickoff enrollment. Then we did talk about the Daler PR proposal for $12,000 for marketing. We discussed that it would be something we'd look at doing and consider it like a two-year type expense, so not just a shot for using it all in one year, but kind of in coordination with the building of the school to help us continue to promote the school, promote the changes that are going on with the new school, try to help increase enrollment, kind of advertise the district to families, that kind of stuff. Keep the community updated on, on the construction progress, what's coming when, and kind of, you know, building that community and enhancing that relationship with the community, just kind of building on what we accomplished during the referendum. And that was kind of what we talked about as the primary focus of utilizing Daler PR, more so than like establishing a foundation, that kind of stuff. And then we did ask Rich to talk to the high school administration, elementary administration and staff about their participation, you know, because it wouldn't be just Daler, we'd also have to have some resources involved to make sure we get buy-in from them on that kind of, making sure that we can commit to a plan, right? Where Daler would kind of give us a timeline and, you know, outline what we wanted to do, and just keep, keep us accountable, kind of like they did for the referendum, which was a big help. Having kind of that, their experience behind that timeline. And with that, we get 100 hours of their time to use as we want, so we can specifically ask them to do some of those specific things. So that was our thought, and then you'll see that as a item on the agenda later on. If you have any questions about what our thinking was behind recommending that to the board as something to approve, if you're ready to ask. And then, let's see. And then we've had lease levy for Southwest West Central, and how they can levy back to our district for a cost of what they've got, and we may see some of their levy requests coming through for some of their building maintenance, that kind of stuff, just like we needed to do some here. So, just something to be aware of. That may be coming. Talked about our vacancy staffing, which is in our board report every month anyway, and has changed a little bit since. and has changed a little bit since our finance committee meeting. And then, same thing, after school care program update, just talking about that from the financial aspect of it. That we didn't have quite the enrollment we were initially anticipating and then just hoping to continue and then see what we could do for the summer. Basically, the same, as you've already heard from the prior report. And then, just kind of a basic rough estimate of ongoing negotiations with the teacher contract. And the audit you saw tonight, just the ongoing. All right, that's it. Any questions? Finance committee side? I'll turn to the right here, so...
Okay. Thank you for the finance report. Building and grounds committee met on December 30th. Okay. Fantastic. So, I kind of walked in a little bit commensurate to meetings, so I've kind of missed the half of this conversation, so maybe help me fill in. The backup and auxiliary heating system, the 1960 building has an auxiliary heating system that works on an old fuel oil tank that is buried around the corner of the dumpsters, underneath the grass there, across the street from the playground. So, we haven't had to use that. I don't know, I don't remember it ever kicking in or having big tolls kicked in, so the talk was of, do we need to have that secondary system? Can we remove it? So, I think we kind of came up with one more question about insurance. Did they require it? Did we look into that at all?
Yeah, I don't know that was necessarily insurance. Was it insurance we wanted to know, because it froze in by...
Yeah, I think it was just one question. Is that something that they would want us to have, or is it some insurance reason that we haven't?
Well, I think part of the reason was because the, when the peak demands, that's why it was originally there, because you pay a big penalty when they try and shut you off, but you still need it. So...
So, that's being reviewed on whether we need to have that. And we also talked about the need for, does the school need a generator? Currently, we do not have a generator. Many schools do have a generator, because that's something we want to look at. Currently, there is not a plan for a generator, but I was talking about it.
Solar and battery backup?
Yeah.
Well, so the new storm shelter, which is PRAE's new gym, will have batteries to run heating and cooling, water and lights. I think it's eight hours.
Okay.
I think it's eight hours.
So, I guess our school has not had a generator for as long as it's been here, so I don't know that we need that. It's pretty expensive, so, and then, there's a maintenance side of that as well. It's going to be started to run every week and all that. So, currently, we are not looking at it, but it's something we're talking about anyways. The bathroom design was something we discussed. We talked about that tonight. The building grounds committee thought of option two was our best route, design committee followed that, so we talked about that. We talked about IEA, is coming in to do the asbestos inspection on January 19th and 20th, and that's preparing for the demolition. So, who knows what they'll find? Hopefully, nothing. Window architects, we talked about that in Rich's report, they're going to be here December 17th and 18th. We also talked in Rich's report about the mechanical engineering plumbing, or mechanical electrical plumbing meeting, that's going to be December 12th. Other building things we talked about, we looked at the timeline again, that was in the original daily proposal. So, basically, the schedule, you click on that there, you'll see the schedule for construction. Talked about the track rebuild, there was some discussion on that, that per that schedule, that is for 2027. If we were to bid that now, the schedules for the contractors are full for next year already, so we'll have to get on the schedule for 2027. It's a further schedule here. We talked about the pre-cast best value bids a little bit. We reviewed that here as well tonight, so it'll come in on January 6th. The building PA system, we got an update on that, that is in, and we're working through the kinks of getting it operational. So...
I think it's working good now, Lisa, or is your PA system working good?
Better, yes.
Okay.
Positive work.
It's not new.
New work.
Thank you for your help with that.
And then, we went over the updated budget list for the capital outlay, LTFM items. We talked about a new egg toolbox. The egg department got a grant for a toolbox. The one they wanted was a little bit more than the grant, so we made up for the difference. It wasn't much different, so...
About a thousand.
About a thousand bucks, which is about 20% of the cost of the project. So, it's some money well spent to get a nice set of tools for the egg department. So, that's ordered and coming. We talked a little bit about the timeline for the upcoming capital outlay, LTFM budgeting process for next year, and that'll be coming up here in February and March. The bleacher update for the steps and railings for the top section of the bleachers is an ongoing process. The company that was building them did not build them correctly, so they could not be installed, so they're coming back out this week? Tomorrow?
Is it?
I think it's tomorrow. They're coming back out to take a look at it, review it, see what they can do for us. So, so far, what they built, we haven't had a bill, and I think they paid for something that doesn't work for us, so...
So, did they give you any idea as to why that happened?
Wrong model, that's all.
They measured once, not twice.
Always measure twice, yeah.
They measured and cut.
Yeah, don't make the cut.
So, hopefully, they come out, they're able to measure them, find a fix and get us some railings. We may not have them for this winter, so I don't know what to do. Maybe we'll get them...
Do they know, I mean, like a timeline, once they hopefully remeasure and...
They've been very quiet on the solution. I wouldn't match them when they come out and measure them no more.
Okay.
I mean, I would put some pressure on for this being in the state.
That's kind of what I was thinking, like...
Plus, we do have a new, we do have new stuff. They want to re...
Right, they are planning to be there tonight.
Tomorrow?
I'll follow up. I'll follow up tomorrow.
We still have a problem with the bleachers extending on the south side, with the top bleachers don't not fully extend, so, I don't know, are we going to maybe try to have them peek at that as well if they're here?
Sure.
Whatever the reason is for that, maybe if we could just get them out for the winter. Are they still using that for lunch? Did you figure that out?
No.
Or not? Okay. So, if we could get them to fully extend out maybe for the winter, and then we could figure it out from there. It's just something in tracking system we're worried about. So, that's what we talked about. Our next meeting's February 4th. Any questions about anything?
Do we want to try to set a date right after the 6th? Or are you going to just let us know?
Yeah. So, what happens is he gets those scores. Put some together, and then, I don't know how quickly they'll get that point together.
Okay.
We'll ask you within a week.
Yeah, I would assume it would be quick.
Yeah.
Because we have a school for Monday.
Right now, I'm more nervous to make sure the bids go out.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have to be out this Friday, if I have to read out 25 days. We'll just wait to hear.
Yep, I have that on my follow-up items for tomorrow. I can probably follow up on...
Moving on to new business for personnel items, we have one resignation, acceptance of the resignation for elementary PE teacher and football coach, Greg LaShet.
Motion to accept the resignation by Zempel?
Motion to accept, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those know? Next, new hires. We have several new hires. Approval of employment for after-school care helper, Brianna Shuler. Approval of employment for after-school care helper, Kyle Smith. Approval of employment for long-term elementary substitute teacher, Shelby Luajie. Approval of employment for volunteer boys basketball coach, Javon Herring. And approval of employment volunteer wrestling coach, Blake Nelson.
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second? Motion and second. Any further discussion? Now, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those know? Next is to adopt the resolution to approve the final levy certification of 2025 payable 2026.
Motion to adopt the resolution to approve the final levy certification by Zempel?
Motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution, so we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Director, Winter?
Winter, yes.
Amanda Lisi, yes.
Laurel Christensen, yes.
Jeremy LeBlanc, yes.
Matt Zempel, yes.
Abby Richter, yes.
Next item is approve the global investigative services as background check provider. Rich talked about this in his report.
I will, motion to approve.
Is there a second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those know? Approve the district administration the authority to make technical changes to school policies without individual board approval. This is the policy approval Matt talked about, make minor technical changes, legal changes. May you like to make a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion here first, then...
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those know? Curious. Approval of the WAME Indian policies and procedures for 2025, 2026.
I'm just here in case you have any questions.
You're welcome.
But also, because this is such a long...
Thank you.
Here's crunching on these.
Yeah, exactly. I took out some of the blue ones for the kids.
Oh, they like the green.
The blue.
Blue raspberry. It's my kids' favorite. I'm green apple.
That's my kids' favorite too, is blue.
The blue.
That helps me a little bit too. I always get so nervous. All right, so, I'll begin by saying that I'm really thankful to be here, and I appreciate the parents within the district that share their children with me. They're truly gifts for me, and they keep me young. I treasure the profound conversations and the laughter we share and the kindness that I see that's extended in our room between the kids and the adults, and the adults and the kids, and the kids amongst themselves, and really enjoy that, and I can, and continue to learn while being in their presence. I would like to thank you as the school board for allowing me the opportunity for employment at Yellow Medicine East as the Indian education coordinator. And the reason I'm here this evening is to answer any questions you have in regards to our Indian policies and procedures that are set in place to make sure that Yellow Medicine East is, I guess, basically following federal regulation that says that Yellow Medicine East has to do an assessment that assesses the extent to which native students are participating on an equal basis with non-native students in the district's educational programs and activities. And then, once that assessment is done, is to let the community, native parents, the parent advisory committee, et cetera, know, and then involve them all in the programming decisions to address the issues found in those assessments. And so, the assessment is just the report that's on the website and that I gave at the public meeting, so I put together the report and share that with the community members, then we, through that meeting, through the parent advisory committee meetings is when we talk a lot about what should be included in programming for our students. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you, Jeremy, for attending the public meeting this year. Our other administrators were unable to attend, and so, kind of at the last minute, Jeremy was able to fill in, and he listened really well and made those in attendance feel heard. And then, when I spoke to him after the meeting, we agreed that some of the concerns that were raised could probably be looked at and addressed, and so, if you want an extra Jolly Rancher for that...
Sure, yeah, thank you, Jeremy.
You're welcome to have me. We've just, we've done a few really fun activities this year. We started with orange shirt day in September and then took a walk, and that walk was just like right at the very end, and so, we didn't get a good, sometimes we just think of these things too late, and so, then it's like, okay, next year, we'll do better with doing a walk right before school, wearing our orange shirt. Indigenous Peoples' Day, we had Adam Savary go here to talk about the name of our school, Yellow Medicine East. What is yellow medicine? Where does that word come from? If you didn't see, kind of help the kids pronounce it. So, it was kind of a nice day. Native American Heritage Month, we had Anton Troyer here for staff, and in him doing indigenous games for our FIAE classes, and then Silas Boyk Buffalo School-wide presentation. So, those are some of our activities this year, and see what our student rep committee would like to do for the remainder of the year. I'm sure they'll think of some really exciting things to do. Any questions for me in regards to programming or policies and procedures? Or Jeremy, if you have anything that you wanted to comment about?
Yeah, no, I, going to the meeting, I enjoyed going to the meeting. I felt like it was a very engaging meeting. I shared some pretty good insightful comments on wishes for the Indian education program, and I, you know, it was well received, and I think there's some good ground to be brought there. And they provided supper. Hadn't eaten yet.
Anything else?
Any other questions for Berta? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Berta.
Thank you, Berta.
Is there a motion for the approval of the WAME Indian policies and procedures?
Motion to approve by Zempel?
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Next is the approval of the daily PR proposal that Matt explained. I think one thing that's good about this, even though the money seems like an extra expense, I think we started a good communication, I guess, thing going with the referendum, and I think it's important to keep that going. One thing that Daler does do for us is keep us on track, because there's so many other things going on throughout, especially with the building construction, everything else, they're kind of there as the, hey, we need to do this, hey, this would be a great idea, could we get this done? And I think that'll be a useful tool for us.
The only question I have was, is have we talked to them about us, like, kind of customizing this proposal to what we're looking for, like over the two years and that sort of thing?
Yeah. We did. That should be in the... That should be in the agenda analysis to reflect that. Yeah, it's going to be, like, for example, that foundation that they established, we kind of, we were not, we expressed we weren't interested in that. So, basically, we're going to pay for $100 of service over this two years.
Okay.
And it can be billed however we'd like to. Maybe four payments over the next two years is appropriate, so, somewhere in between having their money upfront and us meeting certain benchmarks before we pay another piece.
Are you looking for a recommendation on how we pay, or is that?
Yeah, I think that would be, put that right in there, that that's what you folks, unless you feel differently. I would not be in favor of 100% upfront, that's for sure. And I don't know that four is the magic number, maybe six is the magic number, but whatever motion is made, that's what we'll do.
So, if we broke it up into payments like that, say there's more work to be done in, say we do four.
At the very end.
There's more work to be done in quarter two than there is in the rest of them, and we're out of money by the time we get to two on their end. Is that something that would stop them, or?
Yeah, sure. It's going to stop at 100 hours.
Yeah. Well, no, say we, I mean, if we're breaking into blocks, right, so you're going to pay for $24 at a time, and we get to section two, we're already at 70 hours. So, do they stop at 50 until we get to the third section?
Until we've paid the?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know that they're too concerned about.
Yeah, I don't know. There's just.
I'm sure there would be an option to add on more hours for more cost, but if we would need.
Don't worry about it.
Don't worry about that.
Well, I think with as much as we're doing with MSBA and stuff, I really think that they want an ongoing partnership. They really would like to at some point, not something we've talked about, but when it comes time for renewal of our strategic plan, they would like to be that. They would like to do that. And that price, $120 per hour, is probably a little bit lower than what we pay in MSBA. Because I want to say that was like in the neighborhood of four grand for us to do strategic planning with them, and there was, I believe, four meetings. There's some behind-the-scenes stuff, but even those four meetings, I think were only two hours long.
So, we're in. Okay. Any thoughts, any suggestions for this proposal?
Yeah, I think we'll probably need a good chunk to get the plan developed of their time, right, for the pieces that we want, so it might be best to do like a 50% upfront, because I have a feeling we'll burn through that initial 50 hours pretty quick. Unless there's, wait, Jeremy's still here. Unless there's a budget reason not to do it?
No, I mean, we can always set up a prepaid too, so not worry about that.
So, are you suggesting two payments, sir?
Do you two or three? Do you do 50 hours upfront and then the two, two payments for the 25 in the next fiscal year?
So, three payments for 50% upfront.
Basically, we're going to do two per year, but we're already halfway through, so that's your second.
Right. And kind of that, that initial upfront planning, like, if we come to them and say we want this planned out, that's where their initial big investment of time is going to be, is sitting down and working with us to outline the plans that we want to proceed with, right? And sitting down with Crystal and whoever else from administration they need to talk to about what do you want to do, when do you want to accomplish it by, what's the construction timeline for those communications to go out? I just don't want to sort of change it and then have to wait.
So, would you want to make a motion for that?
Yeah, I got lots to nod, so I'll make a motion for approving.
Three payments, 50%.
Yep, three payments, 50% this year, and then two payments for 25% each next year.
Let's wait for a motion for what Matt just said. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no? Curious. Next is the approval of the people transportation services agreement with Central Minnesota Christian Schools. Something they've done for a few years now. They're reversing them for their transportation costs to the district line.
So, just to clarify, just from their house, our district line, legally, we're obligated to provide that transportation.
Make the motion to approve the people transportation?
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no? Curious. All right, now, we have a host of policy updates. Just name them all off here. So, approve the update of policy 417, the chemical use and abuse policy. Policy 507.5, school resource officers. Policy 513, student promotion, retention, and program design. Policy 519, interviews of students by outside agencies. Policy 601, school district curriculum and instructional goals. Policy 612.1, development of parent and family engagement policies for Title I programs. Policy 621, literacy and read act. Policy 709, student transportation safety policy. Policy 306, administrative code of ethics. Policy 606, textbooks and instructional materials. Policy 712, video recording and other, other than on buses. All of these changes are legal minor updates. You have one. One more.
Yep.
So, one more.
I'll make a motion to approve all those.
Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no? Curious. And then, next, we have the reading, first reading of the policy 720, or seven, start that over. The first reading for policy 722, public data requests.
This is a new one we do not currently have.
This is straight from M S B language.
Yep. This just outlines how we have to handle those public data requests and then the fees that we'll charge.
So, this is only the first reading, so we do not need action on this now. We'll bring to the next meeting for action. Comments about this policy? Okay. So, we'll move on to discussion items. We have none. Correspondence? I don't have any. Maybe I'll have any. Upcoming events, the facility focus group meeting on December 17th in the media center at 6 o'clock. There is no school for Christmas break on December 22nd through January 2nd. And the next board meeting is January 12th at 6 o'clock. I mean, all of this is, meeting is adjourned.